Check, check, check. There it goes.
Check.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm gonna bring this meeting to order at 6:30. We have a quorum of four members here present. Next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I had two topics I wanted to, short topics I wanted to add, if that's okay. One was just to have a follow-up discussion on meeting length. And the second was to have, I guess you'd call it a follow-up discussion on how to get, I don't know, higher fidelity feedback, citizen feedback, coming out of the developer meetings.
Can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
So we're adding two items to old business as this, these are carryover topics to item D, correct?
I don't think so.
As these are topics discussed, and so we're...
Yes, there'll be an old business.
Got it, old business.
So we need a motion to add these.
And then I've got meeting length, and then B...
Citizen feedback.
Citizen feedback.
These are follow-up discussions.
Thank you.
So need a motion to add these to the agenda?
Then Deepa?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll second that.
You don't need a second.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Okay, then I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes to the minutes?
I did have a question because the minutes did contain a topic of discussion that we, that you and I had a phone call on, Barbie, because technically we would be approving meeting minutes that had a vote, but that vote, I guess we need to recast. Can you clarify that on how that would be perceived in procedural?
Can you restate that question? I'm not recalling that question.
So when I read the meeting minutes, it still had our vote. How does that work?
Vote for...
Chair and vice chair from that meeting. How does that work in this situation where we may or may not have to re-vote with the meeting minutes?
With this, with the meeting minutes here, then it would just be stated that there was a technical error within the nominations and the voting, so those nominations were redone. So the minutes reflect what happened at the meeting as it happened.
Okay.
So now these minutes will reflect what we're going to, the procedures that we're going to do tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome.
Now make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting in January.
Is a second required?
No, no. So we have a motion on the floor.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so next is going to be the old business items that were just recently added regarding the meeting length. Do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, find out if, I believe, Daniel, you were gonna sort of connect with town staff to kick around some ideas, and didn't know if anything had happened there, but in thinking about it this last month, I did think of a few things that might be simple to add, may not be, I don't have enough experience to know, but for example, perhaps as you're working with town staff, or as the chair and the vice chair work with town staff, we could put some time boxes around agenda items, so actually schedule out the agenda items. We could also decide how and if we want to enforce that, you know, at worst, at least it gives us some guidance as to how much time town staff and leadership of the planning board anticipate these topics taking, and it gives us at least one place to interact and ask whether we should put an end to a conversation, continue it at another time, or proceed. So that would be one suggestion that I had, and we might also want to just sort of check to see how well we do on those notional agenda time boxes over a series of six meetings, just to get a sense of our performance against that. Any thoughts, any other thoughts on what we might do explicitly to manage meeting length?
I know one of the topics that I briefly discussed with staff was just making sure, because we did have a lot of carryover, there was a long hiatus between our last formal meeting and then our most recent formal meeting this year, so there was a lot of items. I had a very positive conversation with staff, just being mindful of that time that we are volunteering as citizen volunteers, and then, and maybe limiting our total number of items. That was a longer list. There was a unique circumstance around that because there was a large gap between the last meeting and this most recent meeting from January 21st, 2025, and so, but with that said, I have no problem looking at maybe a time length or an expected estimated topic discussion.
Is that something that you would want the staff to try to provide, or I can give you a guesstimate?
A guesstimate, maybe, just in, so we can kind of maybe set a tempo of the time per item being discussed, but outside of that, I have no problem with discussion, but I'm not locked into one solution at this time.
Okay.
Agreed, and then once it's set, like a guesstimate, we, as our core team member with the planning board, we have to be diligent about the conversations, how they happen, and we will keep our own self in check for the timeline.
I mean, we could, we could have, you know, time boxes for our statements, and, you know, when our time expires, we can conclude, we can decide whether more discussion is needed, if we have to go beyond that, but it would be an opportunity to make an explicit decision instead of just letting things go on. Again, I don't have a lot of experience, you know, I haven't gone through it, but it, those are techniques that do work in other, in managing time for other meetings. So potentially limiting comment time, but providing people with an opportunity to handle overflows.
Yeah, again, not opposed to any one idea. I think that a little bit of a philosophy might be able to better the meeting overall, but as of right now, I think that there was a unique circumstance around that, and so I'm not overly concerned because our average time meetings in the years past, unless they were large and site-specific.
Had a couple of those.
That our time was normally fairly efficient as a board as a whole.
Okay, well, I would move, it sounds like town staff is supportive of the idea of at least putting together some notional, broken-down time boxes for each agenda item, and I would move that we ask them to do that, and we see how that works for us.
Happy to, thank you.
You had a secondary item also, as citizen feedback? Does that need to be formalized? I thought that was just a staff request.
He said a motion, so he's asking for a motion to see if the board is willing to accept a trial for possibly timing of items to be conducive of people's time here on the board and people's time there in the audience. So I think he's got a motion on the floor, so we'll need to have that voted on.
How do we do that then procedurally? We don't have a leader, so would you lead us in that, Barbie? Because we haven't made our other formal motions yet.
Exactly, that's, that's, a motion's on the floor, so you'll need to vote on that motion, whether or not you agree to times on the agenda, to try or not. It's, you either agree to it or oppose it.
Aye.
I think it might help Rick restate his motion. Rick, could you restate the motion?
Sure. I move that town staff in preparing the agenda for the next meeting and beyond, place notional time boxes, which means the expected time and duration of each topic on the agenda.
He's put a motion on the floor. I believe this one does need to require a second, Barbie?
You'll need to vote, yes.
You'll need to vote? Okay. Regarding a time box, if it is an estimated time box, you know, it's a guidestone, yes, but if you're looking for a hard and fast, then I would require more clarification. So estimated? Yeah, estimated. I'm yes.
My vote is yes.
Aye.
Okay, you have it. A's have it.
Okay, and the second, the second item was just a follow-up. And, you know, we had a little bit of discussion last time in, when we were hearing the last presentation, where there was discussion about the developer meeting, the required developer meeting, and there was a summary provided of the feedback that was received at the development meeting by the developer, but there really wasn't any detailed transcript or, you know, specific itemized items of feedback, and so, since it's so important that as the planning board, we do our best to represent residents' concerns and apply them to our decisions, I just am asking, is there a way that we can, for example, require a transcript for, from the developer meetings, or a video from the developer meeting, so that people's first-person comments can be captured for the record?
Cindy, I'm gonna defer to you, but I don't think so at this time.
The planning ordinance does not require that a transcript be submitted. It requires minutes, so I think we would have to update the planning ordinance in order to require that.
And are we, are we permitted to have town staff at the developer meeting that could take, could take notes or produce a transcript? We're not permitted?
Well, I don't think it's a matter of being permitted. I don't think town staff is required to be at those meetings, and I think that would have to be a discussion with town staff as to whether or not they want to attend those meetings.
So developer meetings are, like, community meetings are put on by the developer for the public. Town staff is generally not there. Now, that's something that we can talk about going forward if you'd like to. Right now, we kind of photograph their sign, make sure that it happened, and figure out what the consensus was afterwards, but...
Well, my thought, yeah, so the reason I would like it to be considered, but I'm promoting this to my fellow board members here, I just think that there's probably more excitement for showing, for residents to show up at a developer meeting than there are to show up to these meetings than there are to, you know, then there's the three people that engage on social media. It's just not a very high fidelity presentation of what resident feedback is, so I would, you know, love to be able to leverage the developer meetings in some fashion, and to be able to say as part of governance for the town, that we're being transparent, we're providing as much information as possible.
Now, do you guys happen to go to developer meetings?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Do you happen to go to developer meetings, like the one for Brinley? Did you make it out?
Oh, I've been to them myself, yeah, that was before I was a board member here, and I don't even know if I'm allowed, to be honest.
They're open to the public. You're allowed to go to...
Yeah, as a resident, you're able to attend.
Just for clarificational purposes, in the past, our, we had been given advice, and we, and as a board, we followed that advice. Charlie, our last town attorney, gave an, a series of advice to the planning board or any citizen board, kind of as a rule. With that, though, if the rules can change based off of perspectives and new knowledge, I have no problem if staff and the town attorney advise that we are, we as citizens, on our citizen side, and volunteers can go to a developer meeting. I have no problem with that. I just, I believe Cindy had a wise word when it did come to that, and Cindy, if you don't mind sharing that with me from a observational point and then an engagement point, how to balance those two. When you're there, and if you do go to a developer meeting, you are there as a citizen and not so much representing or the brand of the town at that point, and so when there's a delineation, and if you become an advocate in a developer meeting, I believe that does then put on a potential, and I'll leave that to our town attorney to advise us from there, for any conflicts. So that would be some of the things that I was shared with, and I keep that in mind, but I don't dis-encourage anybody from garnering more knowledge and engaging in a positive way.
Okay, so I agree with all of that. My experience has been that planning board members do not attend developer meetings with, which also in my experience are called community meetings, so they typically don't, but there's nothing that says that you can't attend those meetings, but if you do, you're attending as a citizen and not necessarily as a planning board member, but everybody knows you're a planning board member.
Right.
My experience also in a lot of the towns that I've worked in is that planning staff, planning staff does attend those meetings, but that's really an extra burden on planning staff because they're typically in, you know, in the evenings, and that's just something I think that if you wanted planning staff to consider, you could ask them to consider, but it, but it truly is a burden on planning staff to attend those extra meetings.
I would also think at that point, too, because it would become a burden, and it's staff hours and allocations, that also comes down to the management of our elected officials at that point, so we can advise our elected officials to consider that, but it would really ultimately be a decision by the BOC. That's my perspective.
Also, there's another party that is an interested party in those discussions, and that's the people that attend those as residents, and if they wanted to appoint somebody as a minutes taker, which would be prudent for somebody that belongs to their HOA or whatever, or the neighboring HOA, somebody that could, and I don't know how you get the word out to all these, these folks to actually get organized like that, like, hey, man, I need somebody to take minutes, because then we can pass this over to the Board of Commissioners or the planning board, and we can have our concerns put on the record, but how do you, how do you get that word out to them without having something official? I don't know, but if the folks in the town are listening to this broadcast, they could have somebody appointed to take notes and get that to staff so they can get it on the record.
And we would welcome anybody in from, from the town of Waxaw Incorporated and unincorporated that may be an interested party, and there are plenty of open seats to come join us and have a discussion, and there are open times for people to have public engagement and public comment period, and those comments will be on the record, and those records do get transpired and communicated to the Board of Commissioners.
I would just ask that they be accurate and not one-sided.
Right.
We want everybody to be impartial with listening ears, should you guys go to something like that, and that'd be fine. I mean, like Cindy said, just be a listener, not really be a participant. That way you can observe how and what the public is questioning, so that you can think about that as you guys make your decisions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rather than to raise questions or argue, don't do any of that.
I would encourage them to, to come here. Engagement here counts.
Right. In the past, we've had just the one perspective, really, of the developer in those meetings, and so you're, you're left with the same decision. Am I getting all the information I'm supposed to be getting to make an informed vote, so...
Yeah, and I would say the really big benefit of the exchange at the community meetings is there's a back and forth, and the constraints around public comment at public, at the official meetings is pretty, are pretty severe, you know, you get to speak, no one is required to have an exchange with you, and so you're not, you know, it's, it's not an optimal way to provide feedback or come to, you know, collective decisions, so really, planning board members attending the community meetings was, was kind of a side issue. My question is, is there a good way to be able to get an honest, accurate record of what the exchange was between residents and the developer at a community meeting? And I understand there's not a requirement that addresses that. What I heard was that we could consider putting that into the ordinance that requires community meetings, and I also heard a suggestion that maybe we can make an open invitation to the community at large, that if they wanted to video-record it and post it, or make a transcript on their own and post it, that that might be an alternative. I have some concerns about accuracy in that regard.
Well, if we're on community meetings, and I don't mean to go too far off on a subject here, but there's a lot of things regarding a community meeting that I've advocated for in the past at Board of Commissioner retreats, and I'd like to go ahead and put that out there of, maybe we should revisit the distance of notice. I know right now it's a minimum of 300 feet. I've advocated in the past of at least looking at and examining a minimum of doubling it.
North Carolina 160D, correct, Cindy, would have, North Carolina law, yeah, so you would want us to go above and beyond the North Carolina law.
Putting out a maximum, and I found there's plenty of maximums where it increases out to at least 1,000 feet in different municipalities, and I have examples if needed.
I believe you. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand what we're asking.
Yeah, I've also, we've also, and recently we've done sign updates, requiring more visible signs, larger signs.
That's all, that's all.
Excuse me, board, but we're getting off topic. This is not on your agenda, and if you want to continue this conversation, you'll need to go back and amend your rules to add this discussion to your agenda, but we need to stay on point with, with the matter at hand, which is feedback, citizen feedback.
Citizen feedback, and I do agree with that, and so with that said, citizen feedback does come with at least a reasonable notice, and so I do think that those are the topics of long discussion that have been discussed in the past, but I do think that those are good topics to continue to discuss.
Would, would it make sense to move to have some kind of working session with the town to explore ways to involve the construction?
I think, let's, let's go ahead and make a motion to do a work session in the, in the future item to include citizen engagement, distance of notice, and any other ordinances that may be in purview to increase citizen engagement.
Well, that misses my main point on this agenda item, which was, I mean, increasing citizen engagement is great. My concern is how we get that feedback back into what's placed before the planning board.
And that's what the work sessions for, and that's what the work session's for, so we can go through the details of that, and, but right now, it's just a framework of how to get to the topic, I believe, and so we can continue on with our agenda.
You want to make that motion again?
I, my motion was for the staff to set aside time in a work session in the next planning board meeting to discuss the topics of citizen engagement and around notice of distance and any others to increase citizen engagement and awareness.
You're still missing my main point.
And feedback.
Okay. I'll take that.
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Do we have any general public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no general public comments, so we'll move down to the new business. We have four members tonight. We have on your agenda nominations of chair and vice chair. Do you wish to proceed with nominations and elections, or would you rather wait till all members of the planning board are present?
As we have several members out, I believe... As we have several members out, I believe it is fair for all members to be able to voice on this revote for Chair and Vice Chair.
So am I hearing that you want to postpone this until the next meeting in March?
My advice is to continue this item until the next Planning Board meeting in March that is pre-scheduled and/or if needed, a special meeting, staff will notice.
I just have a question procedurally. If, since we have an even number of people here to vote, the potential for a tie vote is there? What would happen if we did vote and it was a tie?
Well, the motion would just fail. So I would recommend that you wait until the rest of your members are present, as Daniel has recommended.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
Let's put that to a motion and just determine your next meeting is what, March 18th?
March 18th.
Okay, so I would include in your motion that you wish to postpone the nominations and elections of Chair and Vice Chair until the next meeting on March the 18th so that all members can be present?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on Item F1 and F2 to postpone the election of the Planning Board Chair to continue this item until the March 18th Planning Board meeting.
That would be for Chair and Vice Chair, so the motion needs to include both.
I would be happy to include both. So I'd like to amend my motion to include Item F2, the election of the Planning Board Vice Chair. So that will include the Chair and Vice Chair with a continuance until the March 18th Planning Board meeting.
Motion's on the table, need a vote.
I second it.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All in favor. So the next item is the initial zoning petition, RZ 015919 2025, Rehoboth Drive. I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is a request by the applicant Sutton Capital Group for an initial zoning map amendment for one parcel from Union County R20 zoning to Waxahaw R4. It's approximately 47 acres. The property is located on Rehoboth Road on Parcel 05114029. This is the property location. It's located south of 75, next to the Preserve Phase 1, which is currently under construction. Waxahaw Farms borders the eastern side of the property. Rehoboth Road is to the west. The square that is highlighted, that is not highlighted in their little white in the middle there, is one of their site conditions. It's a Union County maintenance area that's a pump station. Do y'all roughly know where our site is? And I know you're very familiar with the Preserve these days. The zoning of the surrounding properties include the following. To the north, it's Waxahaw R4. To the east, it's Union County R20. To the south, it's Waxahaw R3. And to the west, it's Union County R20. Waxahaw R3 allows the development of single-family detached homes at three units of acre in a pattern that is harmony with existing residential subdivision found throughout town. Developments that meet these goals may qualify for a density bonus of up to .5 units per acre. Union County R20 is intended to accommodate single-family residential development, including most classes of manufactured mobile homes at low to moderate densities. The R20 district is generally intended to apply in areas characterized by a prevalence of manufactured housing. The minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. Waxahaw R4 zoning allows for the development of single-family detached homes, single-family attached homes, and duplexes at a rate of four units per acre, five units if it was a cluster subdivision. R4 is intended to encourage infill development throughout the periphery of downtown area to encourage a compact, walkable, vibrant small town while promoting the historic small-town character of downtown. The blue star up there that's right south of the circle of the downtown area is your location, and the medium density has three to four homes or eight cottages per acre. It's consistent with everything that's around the area. Do note that the connector road for the Waxahaw Parkway South will run through the site, and the developer will be required to build that. It won't quite go anywhere yet, but in the future, it will help with connectivity in and around Waxahaw. The Future Land Use Plan for Union County notes that many municipalities have irregular boundaries. This is a donut hole, one of several that you guys seem to have acquired throughout the years. Numerous pockets of unincorporated land surrounded by the adjacent municipality. Providing municipal services like fire and police would be our problem regardless of whether they were zoned for us. Unfortunately, our police can't be like, oop, sorry, you're not in limits, so we got to send them over there. Being able to provide for them and getting their tax dollars would be useful. What we do to help that is to identify the donut holes, and then we establish a transition zone, which is a designation in the land map that passes a resolution to establish the policy of the Union County Board of Commissioners to not approve upzoning. Their site is strategically different. They suffer from numerous conditions. I've been out to the site, and it's kind of like the Wild, Wild West out there. They will very likely yield less than 2.2 houses per acre just due to some of the constraints and conditions that they have. The thick blue line in the middle that's running east to west there, that's your Waxahaw Parkway South connector. They have to provide right-of-way and build that. The FEMA floodplain is what that giant little lake structure looks like down at the south end there. You also have the Union County Maintenance Site in access, and you can kind of tell in this photo, they're also blessed to have Duke right-of-way for public transmission lines. I know we talked last meeting about PED plans, so I wanted to show you what the future pedestrian access point looked around at this site. The brown is trail, future proposed trails, the red is future proposed sidewalks, and the blue is the Parkway connector. Their proposed zoning is R4. That allows for the development of single-family homes, up to five per acre in a cluster subdivision. Here you will see the different setbacks, the lot min, lot max, side setbacks, and everything that goes with the R4 zoning. State law mandates that zoning must be undertaken with consideration of a comprehensive plan. The Waxahaw 2040 Land Use Plan designates the property as medium-density residential. This designation provides for a mixture of housing types, including single-family homes, townhomes, and cottages. The density of three to four or a cottage's dwelling per acre is consistent with traditional suburban style and is currently utilized for the majority of the town's established subdivisions. The Union County 2050 map also designates the property as a transition zone. Many of these municipalities have irregular boundaries, so we prefer, the county prefers for us to annex them in rather than to leave them with the county. To the right, you actually have Waxahaw Farms, which is what those green lots are. Part of that street is actually in the county, and part of that street is in town. And the part that's in town is not the part that abuts the site, that's the county. So their street is kind of diagonally shifted in half there.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? So that's the Waxahaw Farms alignment?
The Waxahaw Farms. Let me see if I can get you a better picture over here. So see where the green lots are right there? See where the yellow is in the Union County zoning map?
Yes.
See if I can get my little clicker. And then the yellow there where the cul-de-sac is, there's, if you go farther down, that's county. If you go farther down that cul-de-sac to the right, that's actually in town. So that entire street is split up halfway in between what's in the county and what's in the town.
Okay. That's an interesting conundrum.
Yes.
How does that work for planning purposes when taking a longer snapshot of the Parkway that we're discussing?
That will depend on how that develops and what those, if those folks sell, and how that works. It just, it's going to depend on time.
I know the last discussion that was around the Parkway, and a section of the Parkway, was the Yarborough property. The Yarborough property made a statement that the speed, the designed speed of the Parkway is for 35 miles per hour. As, I guess it would be for, that would, the speed would set the design standards of what the Parkway should look like and what kind of line of sites and stuff like that would take place?
It would have to be built to NC dot standards.
Okay, so NC dot standards, but if we, if the speed is at 35, but it really is intended to be a Parkway, when I think of a Parkway, I think of at least 45, maybe 50?
So not necessarily. For example, in Highland Creek, which is a golf club subdivision in northeast Charlotte, they have Highland Creek Parkway, they have 5,000 homes in their neighborhood, and their speed limit's 35.
Okay.
It's two lanes going on each side of an island, and the islands are all landscaping.
Got it.
So it's technically a four-lane road, but the speed limit's only 35. Some Parkways have 25, too. It really just depends.
There's Valentine Commons, kind of the same thing, nice big treed island in the middle, the island's almost probably like 14 feet in certain sections. And then it's one lane each way, and then there's even an additional setback to where there's a bike path on one side, a walkway on one side, just a single walkway on the other side. So one side's multi-use, the other side is just a single, you know, four-foot-wide concrete 88 pathway. I mean, so conceptually, I guess then the point is, what are we trying to accomplish with a Parkway? Because I feel like every time that, conceptually, it's been discussed, it's only been a standard...
Well, they're required.
Two-lane county road.
They are required to put the Parkway in that section. So even if it goes nowhere for the rest of its life, no matter what, they still have to develop it when they develop their parcel. So as those parcels get developed, it'll slowly get pieced together.
What kind of right-of-way footage are we potentially going to acquire if this does move forward?
For?
What's the Parkway, 120 feet, 100-foot right-of-way?
It's 100-foot right-of-way. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's in her presentation. That's where I saw it. Pretty sure it's 100 feet wide. So hang tight on that, and she'll tell you more about the Parkway.
Sure.
I wanted to provide you with the following reasonableness and consistency statement. The request for R4 zoning is consistent with the Waxahaw 2040 comprehensive plan, and the parcels are situated right next to the Preserve Phase 1 and Phase 2, which is currently under construction and in review. The utility infrastructure can easily be extended to support development, and it's reasonable and in the public interest that it will consolidate and rationalize the town's boundaries through annexation with the same land use pattern as the surrounding area to ensure that the town grows in an orderly manner. I did want to note that the staff is not providing a recommendation on these projects anymore. We're just guiding them through the process. So my requested action tonight is that a motion for a favorable recommendation for Petition RZ 015919 2025 and the reasonableness and consistency statement as presented, or a motion for a non-favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. I did want to note that this is a general zoning request, and there are no conditions can be placed on the approval. The applicant has brought a presentation for you guys to see this evening and would wish to talk to you. Would you like to speak to them?
Yeah, please, thank you.
That would be helpful. I did want to note that I just got this about an hour before I got in here, so I haven't had a chance to view it yet, so I'm going to be getting the first watch with you all. This is Bridget. It's short. I know you guys know Bridget.
We got Bridget.
Thank you. He'll get that up for you next one.
Welcome back, Bridget.
Thank you. It's short, I promise. Bridget Grant, land use consultant. It's a pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the Sutton Development Team. We also have Jenna with Land Design who can help us answer any of the more technical questions. And I'll get started as soon as the presentation's up. I saw it already, so I know it's there. Ashley did an incredibly thorough job, so I promise I will not repeat about where the site is at, the zoning, the land use. You all understand the consistency. So just a quick overview, it's just a different map to look at. It's 47.77 acres on Rehoboth Road. Again, she already went over the land use. I think this just sort of shows you that this is closing a gap between a couple of sites. This also shows you where our site is again with the land use plan. We wanted to point out that, as Ashley mentioned, there's a lot going on on this particular site. So we have the Woodleaf subdivision to the north, which is 2.8 dwelling units per acre. The Preserve Phase 1 and 2 below us, it's 2.2 units per acre. And with all of the constraints on our site, we would likely not be able to get anything above what she mentioned with the 2.2 dwelling units per acre, just given the site constraints. We have about 10 acres that are in a power line easement, plus, Ashley, we'd like to go over it with you, but want to confirm, it was our understanding that it was a 70-foot right-of-way dedication, not full construction. So we'll do what's required if we get to that point, but do want to call out that it was our understanding that it was a dedication of right-of-way. Over 20% of the site is set aside for roadway and utilities. And again, that sort of prohibits how much density you could actually develop and have on the site. There's a similar easement and infrastructure as the Rogers Pond development. That development also went through and was assigned the R4 zoning for similar reasons. And so we're basically seeking an initial zoning that would align with what happened with the Smith Douglas piece that had the same utility and roadway set aside. It's less homes per acre than both of the adjacent subdivisions and is aligned with the adopted land use policy. This is what I would call a conventional or straight zoning. So I don't have a specific site plan, but we will share one with you that just gives you an idea of what could be developed on the site. R4 does allow cluster or conservation-type development. And the reason we're seeking that is that the lot size flexibility allows the lots to be pulled away from the power line streams and really account for the thoroughfare and infrastructure in this area and create buildable areas. So I put the big board draft across it with the intent to say, this is a concept plan. This is not something that's been officially filed, but it does give you a good idea of the portion of the site that we'd be using to develop. It's a conventional zoning without site-specific plan, but this one does reflect 2.1 dwelling units per acre. In my experience, when you're working with concept plans, density, unfortunately, developers don't like to hear this, typically only goes down from here, never up, as you get more familiar with the site details, topography, and other constraints. Both the cluster and conservation provisions offer large swaths of contiguous open space, which is very desirable from an environmental perspective in sort of keeping those areas unencumbered with backyards, encroachments, and other things. So as I promised, I would be brief, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll leave this one up since this is likely the one you have the most questions about.
I have one question, and that is, I know one of the maps, Ashley, that you showed had the floodplain on it. Do we know what affects the revisions that FEMA works? I know they're constantly working on updating the floodplain maps. I don't know how close they are to releasing their updated maps, and I don't know whether we have any information as to how they might change. But if we did, could you share that?
Can you read this one? No, you're fine with it. So unfortunately, I don't have any information on you when they're going to update those maps. I can get that information for you if they have it available online. Have you ever been to the website North Carolina FRIS, F-R-I-S?
I have.
Okay, that's where I play. That's where all my maps are. It would tell you on there if and when that would be updated.
Okay, thank you.
Ashley, don't go away yet. I'd like to expand on that. With that floodplain in mind, are we, I can't remember our governing ordinances, but...
They can't build in the buffers.
50-year buffer, 100-year buffer, which buffer? Because I know FEMA sets several buffers, 100-year, 50-year, 20-year. Is that, what buffer is our standard?
What is that, Delaney Creek?
I believe it is Delaney Creek. So I didn't know if we have to, is this a 20-year storm area, or is it like 12-mile creek to where we have to do a 50-year?
That might be a 50-year. I'll double-check that for you.
And that would be my request is, can we please make sure that we take a look at what is our floodplain buffer that we have? I thought it was 50 in that area, because I remember the Preserve had some site restraints.
Yeah, I think it is, too. But since this is just a concept map, we're voting on just the general rezoning.
Yes, I just, I know it's more of a construction document phase, but it's just one of those points of concern that I always try and, we're concerned about. This site has a lot of constraints, handcuffs, and we're not seeing a site-specific plan. And we have to consider all uses.
Understood.
And including clustering, including, you know, could they come back and want something a little more reduced in maybe setbacks? Because it seems to be setbacks are the guiding stone for this application. Bridget, if you want to expand maybe on that?
It's generally lot sizes. I think we can't change the setbacks or any of the dimensional standards.
Our lot dimensionals that pair with R4?
Are less than R3.
Yes, and that's what you want.
Yes, but they can't go less than that. And when you asked the question about if the setbacks could change?
If you cluster, or if you come back with a conditional.
If we came back with a conditional, it'd be completely different.
But then you already have R4. So that's why I was kind of curious on why you guys just didn't, because of the site constraints. Why didn't we have a site-specific plan from the application?
Again, we were sort of following what had been done on other petitions where they were assigned initial zoning.
But your site is unique with a lot of constraints. That's my point.
So is the Smith Douglas site, and I think that's why we were sort of following the lead of the other site that had the power line easement.
Which site?
I can go back to the slide.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Rogers Pond.
Rogers Pond. Okay. So you're comparing yourself to Rogers Pond?
That was a precedent that was used when they did the preliminary meeting with staff. That was a precedent that was used when they did the preliminary meeting with staff.
Aren't we supposed to look at each application, and it's the only unique possibilities based off our land use or development ordinances?
Absolutely. But in planning practice, we always look at precedents.
Okay. So you're looking, and you're comparing and contrasting, but we're handcuffed to only looking at your one site and your features?
At this point.
I understand. Thank you.
Do you guys have any more questions you can add?
It's the ultimate, and it might not be for Bridget, maybe Ashley could talk to it, about the ultimate destination for the Parkway coming out of the Waxaw Farms community. Is that just to hook in right where Helms Road Connector is?
Yeah, it'll circle back through.
It bends to the north.
It would bend to the north towards the, I'm going to forget the applicant's name, but it's the owners of Stacks.
Right.
The condition of the rezoning.
Rezoning.
It would bend back towards the owner of Stacks that we saw on a rezoning not too long ago. There was a recommendation of evaluating, because there was some alignment and stuff.
And do keep in mind that alignments change, come and go as development happens. And so it really just depends on how time prevails.
Yeah.
But we have a general idea of where we need it to go.
There's a, yeah, general.
And they're blessed to have it right through the middle of their site.
Along with, I believe, a wastewater treatment pumping station, the Union County easement.
Do, do.
Oh, are we at 70 feet or 100 feet?
It was 70.
And I believe that it was 100-foot on Yarborough. So I believe the Parkway was designed 100 initially. I would question that.
I'll check with our transportation engineer to ensure that I can get that right.
Okay.
And Ashley, that'd be a requirement. So even if there's a typo on our presentation, if we misunderstood it, it would have to be 100.
Perfect. Thank you. That's, that works for me.
I have a really tiny knit, or confusion. On the zoning request, it lists zero Rehoboth Drive as the address?
That's my fault. All.
Okay.
All Union County GIS, when there's no, well, it's their fault, too. But when there's, on the GIS website, when there's nothing, there's no structure on the property, they list it as zero. So you could live at zero Main Street if you own a piece of property and there's no physical address.
Yeah.
And then there could be 50.
You can't live there.
Right, but you can't live there. But there's 50 zeros.
They just care about the parcel ID.
Right, correct.
Okay.
That's right.
Always learning.
Always. GIS is fun.
Before we leave the topic, I just wanted to thank you for adding the pedestrian plan. Appreciate that. That was very fast response.
That was good, yeah.
I have questions and concerns on this property. It meets the minimum of a general rezoning, yes. But does it answer the concerns that everyday citizens are facing in Waxaw as development continues to happen? I guess that's for the Board of Commissioners to answer. So regarding that, does it meet the minimum standards that the planning board is guided by regarding our future land use map and our land development code? Yes. But it does not answer the concerns of the site, nor the concerns of continued development. I would like to emphasize that the pedestrian plan on Rehoboth really needs some help.
Rehoboth already, I mean, depending on the development that you're speaking of, each development is required to provide their mitigations as they go. So we can really only talk to the mitigations on this specific site tonight.
Yes, I'm just talking about longer-term layover planning, or what is it going to hold as we continue to expand traffic in that area? I know Rehoboth is a small road, and it's very narrow. And there's supposed to be a signal light from the Preserve that is yet to exist.
It's in the works, I promise. It's part of their mitigation plan. They won't be able to get a CO until their mitigations are complete.
Yes, but those are all compounding. And I think those are all worries that the citizens face as they travel and do business, and they go to shops. And those are little things that add up. And I know for me, those are things that I look at when I think about a site like this on general rezoning. Those are some of the concerns that I try and voice so we can try and prepare maybe a little bit better.
I would agree with that. And you were talking about maybe another 200 cars, you know, 105 homes, 200 cars on the road from that. But that ultimately, like you spelled out, that is more of a Board of Commissioners concern. And I do agree that it meets the minimum requirements. Is it reasonable? It's reasonable. Is it consistent? It is consistent with the land use plan, so...
And that's the motion that we have to make tonight.
Yeah, right.
So I just want to make sure that I'm guiding you guys in the right area for what our duty is, rather than what the Board of Commissioners is.
Absolutely. But also, folks that watch us at home, citizens also should be informed that we're asking questions. But ultimately, when it comes to deciding, does this go forward or not, it's with the Commissioners.
Step three instead of step one, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I promised them that they're...
He's doing his part.
So I need a potential action from you guys. I either need a motion for a favorable recommendation for this petition with the reasonableness and consistency statement, or a motion for a non-favorable recommendation.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for a favorable recommendation, if someone wouldn't mind switching it over when they have a second. So I don't have it in front of me.
Do I have it here?
I'd like to make a motion, make a favorable recommendation for petition RZ 015919-2024.
25.
Sorry?
25.
25.
Mm-hmm.
And the reasonable inconsistency statement as presented.
I vote.
Cindy, are we good? Thank you.
Vote now. The motion's on the floor.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
The ayes have it.
Ayes have it. If there's no further questions and no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll start with that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.